We'll call this meeting to order. This is the county commissioners meeting. It is September 7th, 2023, and it's 8:15 a.m. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first public comment, if there's any public that would like to discuss something that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, verification and posting of the agenda.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on August 31st between the hours of 10:00 and 11:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. There is one change. We will move E up to our first item. Because Jim has to leave early. So with that change, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. It's unanimous. Approval of the minutes for April 19th, June 21st, July 19th, and August 3rd?
I move to approve the minutes of the meetings held on April 19th, 2023, June 21st, 2023, July 19th, 2023, August 3rd, 2023.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the night of April 19th, June 21st, July 19th, and August 3rd, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Let's move now to our first item of business. Approval of the necessary tenant impro- let's see, is that the right one? Yeah. Improvements to convert an unused portion of the first floor of the district courthouse or the old jail for evidence and records storage. Chris and Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Frost, Public Works and Planning, for the record. So the item in front of you is a list of tenant improvements for the first floor of the district court. If you recall back on July 21st, this board authorized staff to begin planning and soliciting contracts to convert that old jail, a portion of that old jail, to be used for evidence and record storage. I met with the sheriff and his staff, and we went through a list of improvements that would be required to get that into the condition that the sheriff needs for that to be able to house evidence and records. And prior to moving forward, we wanted to review this list with you so that you could see what was required and provide any input or recommendations on that. So Pam, if you could please...
You have one for this as well?
Yeah, I think there's a drawing and a list. And I've asked Sheriff Hickox to be here today just to answer any questions you may have on the improvements that we discussed. I put together the list and anticipated costs for each item, just for your review and understanding.
You want the list?
Please. Actually, the map first would be great, just so I can kind of show an outline of what we discussed.
Oh, sorry, you're gonna drag it over there.
Yes, that's perfect.
Why can't you see that I'm looking at it?
That top piece right there, yes. So just to give you an idea of what...
Is that working?
Nope. Alright, so we'll freestyle this a little bit.
Hold on, no wait, let me make sure I'm clicking on it here and see if it works now.
Yes, yes. So in relationship to this map, the top of the map is the west side, and so just so you have an idea. So the critical part of this is there's only a certain number of people, or certain certified people allowed in the evidence storage area in relationship to the record storage. So we really needed to keep those two separate, kind of with their own entrance. We do have a... Oh, here we go. No, that's not me, that's you. We do have a security door in between the evidence side and the record side, which would be controlled with a key fob. But what we have is the area in red, it doesn't look so good, but it says records. That would be the area where the sheriff would want to store all of his files and records and things of that nature. The area that is in brown that says evidence would be the evidence storage area. The area in blue... Oh, is it? Thank you. The area in... Right there in blue, that is an area that would be where the evidence technician would be and where the deputies would come in to drop off the evidence. The sheriff has requested a pass-through locker so that the evidence can put in, be put in by the deputy, and that's kind of... This is really not working that well. You can barely see my... So there would be a pass-through locker right in there where the evidence could be placed by the deputy and then transferred over to the evidence tech. And we have plenty of bathrooms in there, so we're going to request to take one of the old cells and kind of dress that up as a bathroom. One of the things we needed to do is we need to maintain court access because the sheriff will, and deputies will still need to be able to take people up to the second floor of this building. So that is where that is listed as court access, so that has a separate door where they can come in and go up to the second floor. The area in green, we can't, sorry.
That's the back door.
That's the back door, yes. The area in green is something that we need for the district court. That's going to be the connection from the new district court to this facility here. And then the area that's hatched with the hatchmark, the black hatchmarks, that's kind of an open area that at some point in time could be developed into evidence storage or some other need that may arise down the future. So we have some pre-construction costs. We got design and architecture, and I just want to point out that back in March of 2015, this board approved the design and architecture for when we were going to do this over at the new sheriff's office. And so we already have a contract in place with the architect for $117,000 for them to do the design over at the new jail. After reviewing that, that became very labor-intensive because of the layout of the existing jail. There's only so many places we could do this add-on because there are cells kind of throughout the whole area, and that really started to mess with parking and drainage. So this was kind of the option that was next. So some of the things that was discussed with the sheriff is demoing the cell walls and the sleeping racks in all these areas, demoing the cell plumbing and all the plumbing fixtures, demo the ceiling. The ceiling is not in very good shape. We think there may be some asbestos in this area, specifically in the chases that house the piping. If we end up removing that, then we would have to take care of some asbestos. The cost to do the evidence storage with some new walls and things like that, I'm anticipating at about $150 a square foot. Same price for the record storage, and those are all broken down by square foot. I have an item in there called packing material storage and court access. What that packaging material is, is envelopes and boxes and things like that that the sheriff needs to put the evidence in, so they need a place where they can store those kind of materials. There's the evidence tech workspace that we discussed, the deputy workspace, the pass-through locker that is in between those, kind of remodeling or redoing the bathroom, installing a new ceiling. I originally had a new...
Why did you need to install a new ceiling?
Because we took the old one out. The old one is in bad shape. Originally, I had new flooring in there, but the sheriff said that he could work with the concrete floor that was in there. But as we tear this stuff out, we'll likely have to do some concrete patching, and then to kind of dress it up a little bit, we would likely put a skim coat or something like that over top of the existing. There was a concern about the HVAC that on one side the heat doesn't work, and on the other side the air conditioning doesn't work, so we're gonna have to do some modifications to the HVAC system. And then I have kind of an estimate in here for video monitoring. There's currently cameras in there. We're hoping we can reuse those, but what we'd like to do is to be able to have video monitoring from the existing sheriff's office now so he can see what's going on in that building. So, and I've also included, because this is an existing building and you never know what you're going to get, I've included a 15% construction contingency. You never know what might happen in these old buildings. So we have a total cost of $914,000, 996. And the reason we wanted to bring this to you today, to see if you all agree with what needs to be done, if there's things that you feel maybe could be taken out, things like that. So that's why we wanted to have this discussion. Once we finalize this, then I can go ahead and start to release the architect to do what needs to be done. So with that, myself and the sheriff will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sheriff, do you have any comments?
I just want to thank Chris for working with us on this, and we've had a couple of meetings. We had the first meeting where we talked about it, and then he presented us with the costs. We went back to him because there was some of the costs in there I didn't understand, and so we were able to work on those and reduce it down to what you were presented with today. Part of the questions that I'd had for Chris initially during our first meeting was stuff that had been historically told to us and that from my time working back there and then being a supervisor there, as well as on the street, we had been told, and stuff we had witnessed, and that was that there was asbestos in there. We had asked for remodels in the past, and we'd been told that they couldn't do anything with that building because of the asbestos. And so I wanted to make sure that Chris was aware that that's what we had been told and ask if there had actually been any kind of study or if that was, it was confirmed or if it was just something that they had been told to us. And he said that, given the age of the building, and I don't want to misspeak for him, but I think given the age of the building, it was kind of a probability, and so that was why that was put in there. The other question that we had was what would be done about lighting, because that place was, if you guys have ever been in there, it was kind of dim and dingy and wasn't really well lit. And so if there was any plans to upgrade the lighting, and he said that, yeah, there would be some form of it to make sure that it was compatible with requirements. The other one that I had was that the heating and air conditioning had stopped working basically towards the end of the time that we had occupied it before. And so we had had extension cords running everywhere and space heaters in places to make it to where it was warm. We all know that every year we get warnings from fire departments and whatever else saying the space heaters are bad, that they can create fires. That's the last thing we want in our evidence vault or our property room with all of our evidence to go up because of a space heater problem. We had a number of leaks when we were back there, and so my question was, have those been fixed or is that something that in the overall plan of this will be fixed and upgraded? So those are the questions that I had. I also asked if we could keep the shelving units that the county purchased a number of years ago. They're still in perfect working condition. They're a very efficient system for us. They save a lot of man-hours from having to bounce around and different things. And they were at the time about $60,000 worth of shelving units. It's something that I would like to see transferred over if we can. I don't think that it would be a very wise decision to trash those. And since our system for storage and retrieval is built around those, I would like to see those transferred over if we can to the new jail. And so the cost for some of the evidence storage might be fluctuating a little bit, just because we already have $60,000 worth of, at that time, shelving units that could be moved over. Okay, that's the only thing I have at this point.
Thank you. Any questions from Miles?
Hey, Chris, do you have to do anything to the roof if there was leaks?
Uh, we won't have... We won't have to do anything to the roof. This is the first floor, so we got the second floor or anything like that. The sheriff has never mentioned that there's any leaks, drips, or anything like that. So again, that construction contingency is there so that when we do the demo of the ceiling, we would be able to see if there's anything that needs to be done. But that's why we have that contingency in there, just to cover that.
And this is still under the budget of extending or adding on to the current sheriff's office, right?
Yes, if I recall, the budget that we had was a range between, I want to say, $900,000 and $1.2 million. But I'll be honest with you, that was a range that we had before we started to look at the sheriff's office.
Yeah, that was a few years ago.
And then actually see how drainage would be impacted, and it was a lot more difficult. It really probably should have been or could have been done at the time that the building was built, but to do it as a remodel now makes it really inconvenient because there are so many cells there that you really only have one or two places where you can put this. And that typically impacts parking, drainage, all those things that happen, and that cost would be much greater than $1.2 million.
I have a question about the asbestos. With my experience with the college and then with the school district, asbestos gets really expensive. Do you think that that $20,000 will cover the asbestos removal?
Again, you would bring a specialist in like a Clean Harbors, the construction. Because we don't know, that is kind of an unknown. Again, if it does run more than that, and we really feel that the only place that we would have asbestos is going to be in those utility chases. And if the architect can determine that we don't have to touch those utility chases and we don't have to get in there, the sheriff has to go in those chases every now and again to change light bulbs and things like that. So it's likely we'll have to demo them, but if we have to dip into the contingency for that, it's just an unknown number right now until we actually see what's there.
The lighting in those areas came from the chases out into the cells. So they had two different light bulbs in there. They had what we call the daylight and the nighttime light. And so when those would burn out, we would have to open up that chase and wiggle our way through, which... In my earlier days of being at the sheriff's office, I was a lot thinner and more nimble and able to wiggle between those walls. Now it's not so easy for me to do. I don't know if that's affecting anyone else as they get older. But you have to wiggle between those pipes and the chases to get back there to change the light bulbs. And as you're doing that, you're brushing against those pipes. Those pipes and their insulation, wrapping and whatever is right here with you. You're brushing against it. You come out of there with that stuff all over your uniform. And so that was my concern, that if, that was why I asked about the lighting earlier, is that if that's going to be the style of lighting, then we might need to modify those walls at some point so that we're not having to put our people into those chases where that stuff potentially exists. And like I said, from my time, it's starting here in 1999. They've told us historically that it's got asbestos in it, and that's why things couldn't be done to improve it. And so those were my questions to him.
What about the area of where the dispatchers were? Is that going to be utilized at all for anything?
Um, if...
Can we go back to the map real quick?
So that shaded area in gray right there, I think that's where the dispatcher was, that's where the sheriff was. Right now, that is not being touched. That's not part of this project at all. I didn't highlight it because it was already in gray, and so the only thing that we're doing is everything except for the gray and the green. And potentially that black hatched area. That black hatched area is not in any of my calculations. That could be something that could be done in the future, should additional evidence storage be required, record storage, things like that. So it's really just the area in red, the evidence area, the court access area, and then the area in blue that we're talking about as part of this project.
Sheriff, have you given it?
Buzz, historically, the area that's marked as red right now, that's records, that was our trustee dorm. Years ago, that was where the juveniles detention center was, and then they modified it, and that became our trustee dorm. The area where the evidence section will be was what we called our main dorm or our male dorm, but it was where the general population was. The trustee dorm was also where we had separation and segregation, if you remember from the tours way back in the day. And so the area that's being accessed right now through the back door into the hallway was our historical entry point for where inmates would come. And they've changed the entrance to go up the stairs from being on that main hallway right across from the booking cage to being into where the attorney room was. If you recall, when you would come in, there was that little window that looked out into the hallway area. That was where the attorney room used to be, where they would meet with them. And so they're going through that room into the stairwell up, and so that's the modification there to go upstairs. The back part where it says deputy's room, and that is the old electrical room and where we used to keep commissary. And so the one side of it's a big electrical panel. The other side of it is a bunch of shelving that we used to keep commissary on when we would fill it years and years ago. And so that's also where we had the fingerprint machine back there at that time. And so there's some modifications back there, but that's just kind of a historical review, I guess, of where we're at. Part of the evidence is our booking cage, and it stops just short of where the blue room was. If you recall that padded room, that's where the wall is running just to the west of that. And so we'll have the main dorm, part of the day room for the trust, or for the main side, and then the front format and the shower dorm. And the shower dorm is where I think some of this remodel stuff will have to be because it's just completely rusted out from years and years of water exposure and other exposures to stuff that we don't want to talk about, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Just a little reference, because we've just gone through it on the asbestos. Some of that, when those specialists come in and take a look at it, like Chris said, it can vary significantly, but we've had to go through that process with the remodels on the cottage school buildings. And so they'll come in and they'll test, is there material there? They'll identify if there's material there, and then they'll identify if it needs to be removed or if it needs to be contained. Sometimes they contain it is a better way in terms of reducing exposure to everyone and containing it in a manner that it isn't having future exposure. So it really depends on when the specialists come in and take a look at. But yeah, that's definitely a variable. The question that I had, which, don't take this in a negative way because it's totally not intended to be that. It's what on here is going to be new as compared to what you currently have? Example I would use, do you currently have video monitoring of the evidence locker from the sheriff's office? Not that this is, that it would be bad to have that. I think it would be good to have that. But what in here is going to be new or different? Does the, is there a pass-through locker that you currently have in your... Does that make sense what I'm trying to drive at? What's going to be an improvement?
What's new up there is the pass-through lockers. What we currently have is a series of lockers that are in a room that they can access down the hallway and then walk into the vault. With the design that we have, without adding more secure doors to it, it becomes kind of a hassle. And so the addition of the pass-through lockers does cut down on having to build in extra doors because the deputies can come in from one side, they can book it, they can put it in the locker. The evidence technician comes into the jail from the secure side of it. They can take that item directly from the locker, log it into the computer, and put it right on the shelf. And so that's the only true change or addition that we have. And we're hoping that we can utilize or reutilize, I guess will be the proper term, the video monitoring that we currently have for some of that over there, as well as the alarm system. I'm sure that there'll have to be some change to that because of the number of doors. But we have currently one that we're willing to, and obviously it's in good shape. We just bought it a couple of years ago, and we would like to see if it could move over. And it's through the local phone company. And so we're more than happy to transfer what we have over and just kind of make that work. I did want to throw some numbers at you guys if I could. I know that there's been questions about the vault, and there was a request to see it today, and our techs and technicians are not available, so I did want to bring some numbers to kind of give you guys a general idea as to how big the vault that we currently have in it is. So the room itself, the main part of the room where we have our, most of our evidence stored, and again, keeping in mind that there's two rooms in there, the main room where we store our evidence, and then the second room where we store the big three, which are guns, narcotics, and valuables. And those three, those need to be separated from the main portion of the evidence just because of the high probability for pilfering and whatever. And so those are kept separate, those are kept under a separate key and that kind of thing. And so the main portion of the room is 27 feet long, from one end to the other wall where the big three is. It's 14 foot wide. The shelf total that we're asking to transfer over comes in at a total of 21.2 feet in length. And so that gives us some space to turn the crank handles, as well as for us to store the fridge and the freezer that we need to store biologicals in. So it gives us a little bit of room in a corner. So that's where we're at with that. And refrigerators are about three foot long. The gun vault and drug vault is a little bit undersized, and so that's what we talked to Chris about as far as maybe for expansion in the future, because this is looking like a long-term plan, right? So maybe making that room a little bit bigger, simply because we're going to need it in the future. But it's currently 14 foot long and six foot wide. We have gun shelves lining both sides of it. And then we have, on the end of it, we have the narcotics bins, and we have the valuables filing cabinet where we store those items.
So as it was previously a bank, then I'm imagining, so where the guns and that stuff is, is like the old vault for the bank, and then there's a building or a room in front of that that's secured?
The whole room is a vault from the bank. The door actually to that vault was in my old office. And it's in where the evidence processing is now, that they had a separate door. And so what I'm assuming, and this is again a complete assumption, because it is brick, it is hardened cement in there, that the back portion where that is, is where they kept extra, I don't know, they're more valuable valuables, I don't know. I don't know why you'd have a room inside of a vault that's a separate vault, but that's what they have. And so the main portion of the vault is where we have all the evidence for the homicide, sexual assaults, burglaries, that kind of thing. And then that separate room is where we put the firearms, narcotics, and the valuable stuff that we don't turn over to Ms. Linda.
Is that going to stay within the $915,000, or is that going to jump into the contingency or...
It should be able to just be able to wall off a room that's in there. And that was something we had briefly talked about. We didn't go into it in too depth because you said that was, I think, something that we could talk about more in design. But we have all the shelves and stuff to go in there. We just need a separate room to put them in so that they're separate from that. And one other question about the vault, just so you guys clarified it. It's a little bit strange, I know. But we have two people at our office that are actual evidence techs that are the only people in the office that have direct access to the vault. And we keep it that way for integrity of that evidence. And so we have two people in there. We've had up to three at certain times. Myself, a dispatcher that, when she worked part-time over there, and then a deputy. And it created a little bit of confusion, and so we've kept it to two, but they're the only ones that have direct access. Anyone else, myself included, even as the sheriff, if I want to go into that vault, I have to get one of them to open up the door. I have to sign the login, and I go in, and that's for integrity purposes so that if an item ever has to go to court, they can pull that record from who was in the vault, who had access to that room, and they'll look at the thing, and then we can ask, what was your purpose in that room? Well, I was in there to do an audit, because we're required by our SOP to do audits of certain items. That's probably more information than you guys wanted for this, but just a general working knowledge of how that works.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do want to, I do want to point something out that by moving forward with this project, unless the sheriff and I can come to an understanding in terms of a potential temporary place to house evidence and records, this will delay the construction of the district court. The district court is almost at 100% drawings. This hasn't even started yet. And obviously, this needs to be done before we can tear down the old sheriff's office for that evidence to be able to move over. So unless the sheriff and I can come to some understanding of what we might be able to do on a temporary basis, this will delay the construction of the district court.
Well, you should be able to do that, huh?
Just so you know, we haven't had any arguments on that, arm wrestling or leg wrestling or otherwise. It's just been something that we have discussed. The ad's going to have to come up with a plan as to where we move it to.
Well, Chris gets very difficult sometimes.
Very difficult.
I don't believe that shirt at all.
Alright, any other questions? Miles, you got any questions?
I did have one, Chris, for you. So on that green area, then that black area, so we're not even touching those, we're just leaving them as they are?
The green area is an area that's going to be required to be constructed as part of the district court building because that will be, that will be the, I don't know if they call it an annex or a pathway across which allows traffic to go up and then get to the stairs to go to the justice course and/or the elevator. So that will be done as part of the district court project. The black area, the area in black right now is just something that, unless you guys tell us that we want to move forward with that, that's just an area that could be for future expansion at some point in time. And it will be walled off, and we'll likely put a door in there so somebody can have access to it, but we'll have that walled off for future expansion.
And just clarity, the idea being that the new district court will be one security check to enter the building. So you'll go through those Main Street, 95th Street entries to go into the, what will be the justice court and what will be the new district court, one spot.
Anything else?
Just anything?
Then I'll entertain, well, I'll open this up for public comment if there's anybody... Then I'll entertain, well, I'll open this up for public comment if there's anybody that has any other thoughts about this. Since that, that's not the case, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agreed-upon list of tenant improvements to the first floor of the district courthouse, old jail for evidence and record storage.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement upon list of tenant improvements to the first floor of the district courthouse for evidence and record storage. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. I got one more right now.
Let's move back to A. Consideration possible action, a petition filed by Fernley Business Park LLC for property located at 11,000 Reno Highway. Rather than to read the rest of this, Chris, you want to go ahead and explain this whole It's road access, I know, that's what we're really talking about is road access.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Ross, Churchill County Public Works, planning for the record. So, this request is from a property owner to abandon a public road easement and convert it to a private road easement. This project is located at the Fernley Industrial Park, which is west of Hazen, right on the county, the Churchill County line, county line, it's that transloading station that's there, and I believe we have a drawing up there. So, the, the applicant has requested that this be abandoned for safety reasons. This road would not be able to be extended at any point in time in the future because the railroad tracks are right to the north of it, and it basically accesses their property and their property only. We had a discussion with the, with the road supervisor, and he is in support of converting this from a public to a private easement. They also want to be able to gate this road to prevent people from accessing the property, which you cannot do if it is a public easement. This went in front of the planning commission a, a couple of meetings ago, and they had recommended approval to abandon the public and turn it into private. This is a little bit of a unorthodox situation because part of this road is in Churchill County and the other part is in Lyon County. And they are only right now requesting the abandonment on the Churchill County side because that's all we have authorization to approve, but they will be approaching Lyon County for the same request. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Dean Patterson, Public Works and Planning for the Record, I just wanted to double-check that the most recent order had been put before you. Joe Sanford and I have been working through these issues of public roads because frankly, we don't really have public works, roads here in Churchill County, and so, they come with particular issues. In the, the case of this one, we were talking about whether the county should reserve an access for emergency and governmental services, not public access, just for emergency and government services. And after discussion, he suggested rather than reserve it in the order, we just say that it's a requirement, that it be placed on the map. And so, perhaps Lane might know whether that's in the current order or whether we need to state it specifically here.
I think we need to state it specifically in the motion as, as we have it here. But that is, as Dean notes, that is an issue that we commonly see going forward, so I think that does need to be stated specifically.
So, what does that need to say, Dean?
I'm sorry?
What does that need to say?
I'm trying to think through it here. Pam, do you happen to have the order? Okay, so, if you look at the order at the last item, I just want to see if it's there, otherwise I have to state it from memory, although it's.
Hey, Chris, does this road have any access to BLM land?
No, it does not.
Around it?
No.
So, I think the, the statement would be that an additional condition that the applicant must place on the map, an access for emergency and governmental services. And I guess we would do the specifics of the statement on the map at the time the map is being prepared for recording.
Mr. Mills, I do believe he added that into that as the last condition, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was covered here.
And so, Lyon County has not dealt with this yet, is that correct?
That's correct. That, that we know of.
Any public comment? Any other questions or comments?
I still have one question on the emergency and governmental access. What condition item is that on there?
It would have to be number five, we'd have to create one.
Create one.
And make number five, yes.
For governmental access?
For emergency and governmental access.
And we could give you that order so you have it, so you can read right from the
You got it?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed abandonment of a public portion of a road easement within Churchill County serving parcels A-2A and A-1A of the record of the survey of a boundary line adjustment for Western Nevada Rail Park LLC, document number 403544, previously created in document number 399749. This approval, approval is subject to the following conditions. Number one, the order of the abandonment shall be incorporated into the previously approved parcel map with appropriate changes labeling notes and certificates. Number two, the abandoned portion of the public road shall be replaced by private, by a private road easement on the parcel map that provides adequate access under county law. Number three, the property, properties that have the right to use the private road shall be clearly stated on the parcel map. Number four, the abandonment shall be executed by the board certificate on the parcel map. And number five, that the owner shall grant Churchill County a public access easement on the private road for the provision of emergency and government access.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed abandonment of the public, of the public portion of the road easement within Churchill County, as stated by Commissioner Ghetto. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. We'll move on to appointment item B. Consideration possible action, ratification of a subaward between the State of Nevada Division of Aging and Services and Churchill County Social Services for fiscal year 2024 to provide in-home services in the amount of $119,601.36. Shannon?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, Shannon Erts, Churchill County Social Services. So, we are in receipt of the grant award of $119,000 to provide the homemaker program. Because what this does is provides in-home maker services for our vulnerable elders in Churchill County. Currently, we have 66 elderly that are approved for services, 60 are receiving, so we have six that are just placing, are pending to receive that service. We can provide up to 75 services. We're just kind of putting those applications out to make sure individuals are eligible for this. Today, we are asking for this ratification. This does date back to July 1st, so that's why I did go ahead and execute so we could maintain these services and not have interruption. So, we're just asking for that approval. Any questions?
Any questions for Shannon? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the ratification of the sub-road as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ratification of the sub-award as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
We'll now move forward. Consideration possible action, appointment of Aubrey Burgess to the Churchill County Advisory Board for Management of Wildlife for a term ending July 31st, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Ross, for the record, on behalf of the county manager's office. The Churchill County Advisory Board to manage wildlife consists of five members serving a staggered three-year terms. Timothy Goobler's most recent term ended in July 31st of this year, and he had indicated that he was not able to serve another term. A notice of open, a point of position was published and received a total of two applications, one from Aubrey Burgess and another one from Dana Weishout, who were both interviewed earlier this year for a prior opening on the board. County Manager Barbie and Chairwoman Peggy Hughes had conducted those interviews, and they recommend that Aubrey Burgess be appointed to fulfill the term, which runs through July 31st of 2026.
Is there any public comment? All right, we'll move forward. Any questions? Questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Aubrey Burgess to the Churchill County Advisory Board to manage wildlife to fill a term ending July 31st, 2026.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Aubrey Burgess to the Churchill County Advisory Board to manage wildlife, to fill a term of ending July 31st, 2026. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. Oh, you need a picture? Mr. Burgess, we're sorry you had to wait so long for all of this.
How do I, how do I make this bigger? Just repeat after me. Okay. Right. Aye, state your name. Aye, Aubrey Burgess. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. Protect and defend. Protect and defend. The Constitution and government. The Constitution and government. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution and government. And the Constitution and government. Of the state of Nevada. Of the state of Nevada. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Loyalty to the same. Loyalty to the same. To any ordinance. To any ordinance. Resolution. Resolution. Or law. Or law. Of any state. Of any state. Notwithstanding. Notwithstanding. And that I will. And that I will. Well and faithfully. Well and faithfully. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of or position of. Of the office of or position of. Advisory Board to manage wildlife. Advisory Board to manage wildlife. On which I'm about to enter, so help me God. On which I'm about to enter, so help me God. Right. Thank you.
Consideration possible action, final approval of the purchase of commercial real estate located at 290 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the amount of $500,000. Chris, do you want to talk about that?
Lane Mills, Chief Deputy DA.
Okay, Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, this is the final process in the purchase of this property on Main Street, 290 South Main Street, for $500,000. We close very soon, so we need to have this approved, and then we need to get it over to the closing agent.
Any questions for Lane? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase and authorize the county manager to sign all documents necessary for the purchase of commercial real estate at 290 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the amount of $500,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase and authorize the county manager to sign all documents necessary for the purchase of commercial real estate property at 290 South Main Street, Fallon, Nevada, in the amount of $500,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous, thank you. We'll go on to letters received. Any, anybody want to pull anything out?
I'd like to point something out, please. If we look at item C, there's a letter from the Governor's Office of Economic Development in which potential company Idaho Asphalt Supply is requesting a tax abatement for a total of $739,136,000 over 10 years. I wanted to point out that this is, when I send out the sales tax, these are the abatements that come from the state that, like, like our sales tax is going up, the number, however, we're getting less revenue. That is due to these type of abatements. And in 630, 2022, our abatements for this, of this type were $560,000 that we did not get in revenue from property tax and from sales tax. So, like, when we have our, our assessed values going up, however, our revenues are not going up, a lot of that has to do with companies like this coming to town that are asking for abatements from the state, and the state grants them. And this letter is to inform us that this company has asked for that, and I just wanted to let you know that, that that's how it affects us. So, that's all I wanted to show. Thanks.
So, is this, is this like what happened with the geothermal companies?
That's correct. And then I could...
Sherry, did you want to send a letter opposing it? Is that what your plan is?
We could, well, there's a, there's a board hearing on September 12th at 1:00 PM. And I mean, according to the letter, we can do public comments saying we oppose it. I mean, it depends, you know, they're saying they're bringing economic development into the counties, so there's that. However, you know, it does decrease our revenues when they ask for these type of abatements. With the geothermal, they got them from this governor's office, and we opposed them because, I mean, they have to have geothermal where the hot water is. So, we felt like those weren't even necessary. And whether this is necessary or not, that would be your call. Because, you know, you have environmental impact and stuff like that.
So, your opinion is, is that we should oppose this?
I would, I mean, I don't, I would, yeah, I want the revenue.
I agree. I agree with you.
So, Buzz, would we have to put that on the next agenda to send a letter? Or can we just send one?
I think it would be too late if we do it the next agenda. It wasn't agendaized.
Can you just send a letter opposing it with you signing it? Yeah.
We need to legitimize it.
Okay, yeah, so. We need what?
To agendaize.
Oh, agendaize it, okay. So, I guess, Sherry, you can do public comment at the meeting.
Okay, I will, thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion. No motion? Okay. We can't motion on, on, on those things, yeah? Okay. Let's go on to old business. First item is consideration possible action, ratification of proposal from John S. Wright and Associates in the amount of $1,650 to provide professional appraisal services. and Associates in the amount of $1,650 to provide professional appraisal services for the purpose of evaluating conservation easement on property under the ownership of Frederick D. Buckmaster and Jan D. Buckmaster, APN 006-771-59.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Chris Ross, on behalf of the County Manager's Office. So as part of the Churchill County and the US Navy's Conservation Easement Program, the US Navy has engaged John S. Wright and Associates to prepare an appraisal of the unencumbered fee simple market value and an appraisal of the restricted use easement for the property under the ownership of Fred and Jan Buckmaster. As part of this contract, John S. Wright agrees to prepare an appraisal of the conservation easement on this property for the county's review and consideration. The appraisal report will be used by the county in order to evaluate the potential purchase of the conservation easement, which is a requirement of this process. Ultimately, once an appraisal is obtained, if a purchasing agreement is executed, following Churchill County Commission's approval, the cost to purchase the easement will be divided with the Navy contributing 75% and the county contributing 25% per the encroachment protection agreement. The work on this appraisal has already been completed.
Any questions for Chris? Any public comment? And we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to ratify the appraisal proposal from John S. Wright and Associates to perform a summary appraisal report on property under the ownership of Frederick D. Buckmaster and Jane D. Buckmaster, APN 006-771-59.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded, excuse me. It's been moved and seconded to ratify the appraisal proposal from John S. Wright and Associates to perform a summary appraisal report on property under the ownership of Fred Buckmaster and Jan Buckmaster. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Let's move on to B. Consideration possible action, approval of an agreement for purchase of a conservation restrictive use easement with Frederick D. Buckmaster and Jan D. Buckmaster on Assessor Parcel 006-771-59 totaling 43.25 acres with 22.26 acres of water rights.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Chris Ross, for the record on behalf of the County Manager's Office. So this property is owned by Fred and Jan Buckmaster, and it is an approved sending site. As mentioned, the sending site application includes 43.25 acres of land and has 22.26 water rights, which are included in this easement. The landowner did elect to reserve one future home site. Easement on this property and development rights transferred to designated receiving sites will preserve agriculture and facilitate naval air station fallance plan to minimize urban growth on land surrounding the base. This purchase does meet the Churchill County TDR program and goals. The estimated total cost is $110,000 plus the closing cost, which is going to be divided 75% for the Navy and 25% for Churchill County. Churchill County's portion to be paid from the Water Resources Fund, and the funds have been budgeted and are available for this purchase.
Any questions for Chris? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve purchase of a conservation easement and 40 transferable developmental rights from the approved sending site Assessor's Parcel numbers 006-771-59.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of a conservation easement at 40 transferable development rights from the approved sending site Assessor's Parcel number 006-771-59. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to consideration possible actions. This is old business C. Approval of an agreement for purchase of a conservation restrictive use easement with Jeffrey L. Goines and Karen K. Goines, co-trustees of the Jeff and Karen Goines 2017 Revocable Trust on Assessor's Parcel numbers 006-692-30 and 006-692-31 and 006-692-32 totaling 48.38 acres with 33.70 acres of water rights.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Chris Ross, for the record. So this property is under the ownership of Jeff L. Goines and Karen K. Goines, co-trustees of the Jeff and Karen Goines 2017 Revocable Trust, which is an approved sending site. Sending site application includes 40.38 acres of land with 33.70 water rights being included in this easement. The easement on this property and development rights transferred to designated receiving sites will preserve agriculture and facilitate naval air station fallance plan to minimize urban growth on land surrounding the base. This purchase meets the Churchill County TDR program goals. The estimated total cost is $135,000 plus the closing cost, which will be divided 75% to the Navy, 25% by Churchill County. Churchill County's portion is to be paid from the Water Resource Fund, and the funds have been budgeted and are available for this purchase.
Any questions for Chris? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase of a conservation easement and 50 TDRs from the approved sending site, APN numbers 006-692-30, 31, and 32.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of conservation easement for 50 TDRs from the approved sending site Assessor's Parcel number 006-692-30, 31, and 32. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. We will move to new business. Consideration possible action, approval of settlement agreements with Tevia and Walgreens as part of the One Nevada opioid litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Lane Mills, for the record of the Churchill County District Attorney's Office. This is part of this previously forward authorized litigation, opioid litigation involving the Attorney General's Office. It is a settlement under the One Nevada Agreement with Walgreens and Tevia. Under the proposed settlement, Churchill County is going to receive $561,040.66 over 20 years from Teva and $841,560.98 over 15 years from Walgreens. This is our proportional share that we previously agreed to under our One Nevada Agreement. We have the documents here for you to sign. This is a time sensitive thing. We need to get this back to the Attorney General's Office by the end of next week.
Any questions for Lane? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve and direct the chair to sign settlement agreements with Teva and Walgreens.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and direct the chair to sign the settlement agreements with Tevia and Walgreens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. New business C, or new business B. We'll go to B. Motion to, this is a consideration possible action, ratification of an appraisal proposal in the amount of $8,500 from Johnson Perkins Griffin Real Estate Appraisers and Consultants for an appraisal of Assessor Parcel number 006-691-01 located at 2055 Scher's Highway, Churchill County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Chris Ross, on behalf of the County Manager's Office, for the record. So this property is located at 2055 Scher's Highway and is currently owned by the University of Nevada Reno, and we commonly refer to this as the Ag Research Park and Liberty Park and Liberty Pond. Under an existing lease agreement, the county maintains portions of this property for athletic fields, dog park, fishing, and recreational activities. This property has been identified for use in future Snipluma project, but in order for the county to apply for Snipluma funds, we must own the property. Outside of Snipluma project application rounds, land purchases are permissible using Snipluma funds, so long as the seller and buyer region agreement. The university is agreeable to selling this property to the county. The county has engaged with Scott Griffin of Johnson Perkins Griffin to perform an appraisal of the fee simple interest for this property with the objective of the county acquiring the land. Once under county ownership, the county will apply for Snipluma project funds to create an ag literacy park, which will consist of a partnership between the Nevada Department of Ag, CBNR, the Cooperative Extension, and Churchill County. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris? Any public comment? Seeing none, unless you guys have questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to ratify the appraisal proposal from Johnson Perkins and Griffin for the appraisal of APN 006-691-01.
Second it. It's been moved and seconded to ratify the appraisal proposal from Johnson Perkins Griffin for an appraisal of APN 006-691-01. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Update regarding a purchase intended use, maintenance, and operations of an unmanned aerial vehicle by the Churchill County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff?
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to talk about our latest tool that we have. Sheriff Richard Ecox, for the record, thank you again for this opportunity. So the first time that I ever saw a drone, which is what they're commonly called for the unmanned aerial vehicle utilized in law enforcement, was on a fatal accident scene on I-80. NHP, which is now the state police, was utilizing it to document a very lengthy fatal car crash. They had went out and marked out the points of interest as far as where the vehicle had skidded, yawed, had turned over, where body parts were laid out, et cetera. And so they marked those out, and then they flew the drones over the top of them, and it presented a very unique and unattainable viewpoint of that accident from any other method. Even if you were to get in a bucket truck, you're still only seeing it from one angle. And so we've seen that on a couple of different scenes that they've had, and it's been very helpful to get a better picture of that scene. We've utilized drones already within our agency, but they were privately owned drones. And searches for people, searches for other evidence, we have had missing peoples, and so we've had members of our agency that have had their operator's license to the State of Nevada, and some that haven't, but they haven't flown them high enough to really get interfered. They've come out and they've helped us search for people in really dense thickets and on other areas to kind of keep track of where the tracks are headed so that we can get to those. We also saw them used extensively in the Naomi Iriyon murder and investigation. They used it to fly that scene and presented us with some, some very, I think, very important data as to how that scene laid out, that gave us a perspective that was, again, unattainable through any other means. And so with some changes in the law that was coming up, seeing what was going on in Carson City about them being registered and stuff with the State of Nevada, making sure that we were in compliance with the law by having people that were trained on it, we've been looking at them for quite a while. And so we found a company that was out of Las Vegas, so it's a local Nevada company. They manufacture their stuff there, they put it together down there, and that was where we would be dealing with them at. And so we've been talking with them because their product is pretty robust. It can withstand a lot of damage and still fly. It has the capabilities of having thermal on it, which is the one that we purchased, so we can fly at night if we have a missing kid, if we have other suspects that we're tracking that's dangerous to the community, we have it on the ability when we fly that thing, once we get our people certified.
So it has thermal to...
What's that?
It has thermal?
It does. Yes, sir. So we can track that person if they take off, yes, sir. We can track their footprints or whatever, and we've had handheld devices, but that slows down at night because you're having to track where they go, and you don't know if they circle back, and you're having to cautiously approach. What we've found with using the handheld thermal devices is that they can get ahead of us so far that the heat signature starts to dissipate, and we're losing it. But with a drone, you're not putting your people in that direct risk. You're being able to put that drone up, and you're able to fly and catch that heat signature off their shoe impressions or even off of them. And so that was a huge plus for us because I think it's going to be an officer safety issue. We can put that up, we can fly it, and we can try and keep track of those people a little bit better if they're on the run. And while that might sound like a far-fetched thing, it's really not. We've had, we've had people run through cornfields after they've been caught doing sexual assaults. We've had people run through other fields and run down the road, and this is something that we feel like we can launch and help keep track of them before they become a manhunt kind of thing. So back to this, we have utilized them in the past. We're one of the few counties in the area that does not have one. Before we purchased it, we did reach out to a number of the counties in the area just to find out if this was something that was, we were unique in, and we found that we were kind of unique in the area that we don't have one. Washoe, Carson, Lyon, Douglas, Pershing, Humboldt County, all have them. Elko County has them. Eureka County has them in every car. We didn't go that route. We bought a couple of them that we feel are higher quality, and will have them available to us. And so the product, again, like I said, we purchased out of Las Vegas. It has the ability to deliver an item, so if we have a barricaded subject, we have the ability to put a throw phone with that drone, send it in, and deliver that phone so we can establish communications versus just kind of tossing it in there and hoping that it survives the toss. Because if anybody's ever dropped their phone, they know that it breaks at the most inopportune time. And so we have the ability with this one. We actually got two with this purchase. And the reason that we purchased it at the time that we did, and I want to stop right there and apologize, I know I should have come forward and said, hey, this is what we're intending to do, and got, let you guys know, and got those funds transferred. And so I apologize, there was no disrespect intended on my part for that. We took the opportunity because they had the ability to purchase two of the drones. So we can fly one out to just short of maximum reach, and it will relay then for the other drone. And so we have now the capability of extending that flight distance out. And we can go and purchase it, perch it on top of a building, and it'll, again, relay that signal for the other one, so we can effectively extend our search range considerably without putting our people, which is our greatest asset, I believe, in danger and harm's way. We have the ability to fly it into a building, not into the building, obviously, but through the building, searching if we have a hostile situation, like an active shooter, an active assailant kind of a thing, we can fly it through there. We can get video of it, we can get still pictures, but it has the ability with thermal, and it has a small package to delivery of availability. It also has something that I think is kind of cool. So if we have a person that's barricaded, it has a window breaker on it.
It has what?
A window breaker.
Oh, yeah.
So if we have somebody at the school that's barricaded or in another building that has a glass window and we need to get access to it, we can break that window, fly it in, drop that phone, come back out, get photos, whatever needs to have the situation. So it also, we can throw it up and we can use it if we have a hazmat situation. So if the fire department needed an assessment on something, we have the ability to put that up. So the ongoing cost was something that I was very interested in, because any time you purchase something, whether it's software or product, it always seems like there's ongoing maintenance charges, right? There is none with this vehicle. It has a very robust, at least for that industry, a very robust warranty. And so the only cost associated with it that'll be ongoing is $150 per licensed flyer, essentially, every two years. So if we had three or four members of our agency that we wanted to get certified, which we will be getting certified to fly this thing, the upfront cost is $150, and then from there, it'll be every two years for us to maintain that license. We've talked to a couple of people. There's a class that we have looked at. It's a two-day class. We're looking to send in some people to for that certification. It covers laws, it covers a whole variety of stuff that I would bore you with if I tried to read it to you, because it's like several pages. But that's the class that we're looking at. It does, at the end of it, does allow them to get their certification through the State of Nevada to fly it. State of Nevada changed their laws during this last legislative session to where you have to register your drones if you're a state entity with them. And so we will be doing that. That was one of the reasons that we felt like, instead of using privately owned drones to get the photos that we've used, it was better for us to have one of our own so that we were in compliance with the laws. So that's where we're at with that. There was also the change in that law where it says you can't have anything that's man... There was also the change in that law where it says you can't have anything that's manufactured from China in your drone, and so we made sure, we called the company, and we made sure that we were in compliance with that law before we purchased it. It does have state purchasing, so we were in compliance with the law in that aspect that we, we made sure that we had, had that.
It's not from China.
It is not from China, sir, it's from Las Vegas, which, I don't know, it's a whole nother world in and of itself, but it's from Nevada, and so that was another selling point for me, is that we're keeping business in Nevada. We're very excited about the opportunities to use this, not only for documentations of crime scenes, but also for the searching, if we have kids that come up missing, we have a suspect that comes up missing, we want to be able to utilize this to keep our people safe, because, like I've stated before, I think my employees, the employees of Churchill County are our greatest asset, so if we have the ability to utilize this, it's a lot cheaper than replacing somebody. And so that was kind of the updated version of it, if you guys have questions, I'd be happy to answer. I have not a flight guy on that, so I don't think I have the coordination for it, so I would be all throughs of what I was seeing and probably fly it over to see if I could find ducks.
So you're going to get some guys trained so they don't, they don't crash this?
Yes, sir. I actually have two members on my staff right now that are already certified on drones, and so once we get policies and procedures up in place, then we can actually get them flying on it. But we intend to get several people, not only from the patrol side, but also from the jail side, so that if we're working a scene, we can bring somebody out to have them fly and collect photos and video and that kind of thing. So our, one of our goals, one of our visions for this thing, is if we have a large burglary scene where we have multiple trips in and out, or we have multiple people that are doing it, we can set up markers, different colors, to kind of point out the different shoe impressions or how many trips they came in and out, fly the drone, get those videos of that so that when the district attorney's office presents this to court, they can present that this was, this was not just a quick smash and grab, but they have more evidence of that. If we have like a homicide like we've used it for in the past, it gives us a very unique perspective that you can't get from a bucket truck that only shows from one angle. You can actually get directly above that without tampering with your scene and get that evidence or get those, get those photos that you need.
Okay. Well, we're pretty lucky to have both Art here and Lane here, and so I have a question.
Absolutely, sir.
Can, can we utilize information that's gathered by the sheriff's department with this drone? Can you use that information as evidence in court?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Lane Mills, for the record, District Attorney's Office. Potentially, yes. The legislature in this last session passed a bill on the use of drones in the criminal context, and they made, they made it, for the most part, fairly restrictive in that use, but you need to have a search warrant for the majority of the time that you're going to use that. So, for instance, we've had several murder cases here where we've had search warrants on the scene. You just build that into the search warrant, and you're easily able to use the drone in those cases.
Okay.
The legislature was very concerned about a surveillance state, essentially, and so they've been very restrictive on the use of that stuff in that if you're going to do that, you're going to need to have a search warrant. And so, again, a lot of this is, it's a brand new statute, and so when we first saw the statute, honestly, my thought just went to our assessor's office, because they use a drone for doing the assessing, the photographing of everything, and so that was the first thing, and then when we found out about this, it's like it's a different analysis. And so, but the bill they passed was fairly comprehensive and restrictive for a lot of things, but yeah, it can be used, but in most cases criminally, you're going to need to have a search warrant, like you would for anything, you need to have a judicial officer or independent officer approve that use.
So you need a search warrant if you're going to scan over my backyard and see my marijuana patch?
Yes, sir. We don't have, we don't really intend to use it for that, but if we had a, if we had a report such as we, the one that we just uprooted, if we had a report that there was 300 and some plants in a backyard, and we couldn't get access to it any other way, then we would apply to the courts and say, this is what we're getting. When we go downwind, we catch the, the very strong odor of skunk continuously. Skunk is kind of a generic term for what you smell, smells like. Lane, it closes him up completely, and he can't smell anything, but it's, it's a very strong odor, and so, yeah, if we had, if we had a strong enough information that we believed you were cultivating marijuana in your backyard in defiance of the law, then we would apply to the court, and the court could either grant that or not grant that. That is not our main intended purpose, its intended purpose is to gather evidence for, like on homicide scenes or burglary scenes, where we can present that evidence to, to the jury and explain that while this person took multiple trips in and out of the house, or there was a couple of people, and these are their shoe impressions, and we tracked them to here, they came in through here and clearly explained that scene to them, because it's very hard sometimes to explain a scene to people that they haven't seen, but if you have an aerial photograph of it. But like I said, on the Naomi Iriyon case, presented us with some very unique perspective as to where those tracks from that vehicle had gone, and it was, it was eye opening to us that we really kind of need to step into that realm officially and not just use our guys, because if we want to utilize this program in the front with this law that's coming up, it was restrictive, and we don't want to be one of those agencies that has something that we're utilizing that's not in compliance with the law.
Okay.
And have our evidence tossed out. So we made sure to buy the vehicle that was within the law there, and making sure that we got policies, we already got policies or copies of policies from Douglas County, we're working on getting them from Carson City and Washoe so that we can make sure that our policies match up. We've also reached out to our policy company, LexiPol, and they'll be sending us theirs, and I think that our undersheriff has actually spoken to PoolPact about it as well, so that we can combine all of those together, make sure that we have the most comprehensive policy, and then we'll be working with the DAs office for them to review it.
Just to clarify, before you hover your drone over my house, I'm not growing marijuana. It's only tomatoes and onions. Okay.
My onions didn't do well, so if you have onions growing, good, good for you, my tomatoes are doing awesome.
So Sheriff, do you have to get clearance from the Navy Base before you fly the drone?
So if we, we are restricted to 400 AGL, which is what they call the above-ground level. If we're closer to the base, if we had a reason to be closer to the base, or we were closer to one of their restriction areas, we can call the base, and there's a number that they have, we call them, we tell them, they can give us a code, and off we go. If we had to fly something near the base, they have a program that's, I don't want to say top secret, but it's, it's not publicly known, where they restrict drones from there, but we've already cleared that if we have to run it near there, we can call them and work with them, and they could, and they will allow us to fly it close to there if we have legitimate law enforcement reasons to do so.
Want else, any questions?
I do have a question for the lawyers here, just entertain me, just out of curiosity. So if, like, let's say, like, you just had that drug bust not too long ago of the marijuana? Just say, like, in that circumstance, if you had, let's say, two weeks prior, you had a suspect that was running down the road, you're using the drone, and you flew past this place, and in reviewing footage, you noticed that prior, earlier to when you guys actually did it, how does that situation work in that?
That would be inadmissible evidence.
Inadmissible evidence?
Inadmissible.
We couldn't, we couldn't use it, sir.
You can't use it, you can't use it for anything.
Awesome. Okay. Any public comment? Seeing none. Sheriff, thank you very much for your information.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about Sheriff's Office, I'll do that all day long.
Okay. We will move on, consideration for future agenda items? I think that the one item that you were talking about, Sherri.
By the, by the time that we have our next meeting, I think the submittal date or the actual review date is September 12th.
Okay.
So I think we'll be too late. It's, and then we also didn't receive that letter until? August 11th, so they really don't give you much time to discuss it.
And in the past, the comptroller's office has gone in and spoken for these, I don't know that it does any good, but we have done that in the past.
So are you going to do that this time?
Yes, I'll go in to say that we'd like to have a statement that this is reducing our revenues.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, we need to do the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any items that want to be pulled out of consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent items. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Commissioner and management staff reports. I'll start. I, I attended the Carson Water Subconservancy District Meeting in Virginia City a couple of weeks ago. We had quite a presentation on the flooding that's been going on in Virginia City. Fortunately, none of it's been going into homes, but a lot of, a lot of eroding and a lot of roads washed out. Also, I attended the library board meeting last week, or actually, it was Monday, and the CETA meeting that we held a couple of weeks ago, and those were all interesting meetings, that was about it. Justin?
I have nothing to pass.
Miles?
I had an RTC meeting that I forgot to share with you last meeting, but that's all I had, so.
Okay. Sherri?
I just wanted to touch on the sales tax that I sent out last week. Our year-end came in, we have, we received $8,667,443.36. That is .5% below last year, with dollar change was $43,852.20. So that's our year-end sales tax numbers, thank you.
Thank you. Lane, do you have anything?
About the only thing I have for you is that there, we have one deputy district attorney in our office who is very happy, he has a brand new baby, so he's taking a little time off, and so.
Oh, is that Jeff?
Yes, Jeff, so a very happy staff member, and so we're very excited for him, and we have been working with Mr. Spross closely on the CC COM renovation, and we're looking forward to continue working closely with him on that and seeing that to a successful completion.
Thank you. Chris, do you have anything?
No, nothing from me.
Linda?
Property taxes have been keeping our office very busy, on top of getting ready for elections, has been keeping us really busy.
I was in there the other day signing some stuff, and I noticed there was a, a couple that they said they couldn't pay their property taxes. Do you have any? I mean, the lady was in tears because she couldn't pay her property taxes. Is there any recourse for people that are not able to do that?
There's provision in law, there's nothing that we can do to stop property tax process, however, if they were having a hard time, then we could do an agreement that they could make payments on it. It wouldn't stop penalty process, it wouldn't stop, you know, interest, but we deal with this on odd occasions and get people caught up on that.
Pam, anything? Art, anything? Okay. Sheriff?
Just a couple of quick things. We attended the Cantle Festival, we were in their meetings with them every week, and I went to the Cantle Festival, things kind of changed at the last minute, but we, what we saw down there, it was a success. Parking again was kind of a nightmare along the road, but no accidents, nobody getting ran over, so we'll count that as a success in that arena. Search and rescue in our office has been very busy with water searches at the lake and then searches for other missing people out behind the lake, and so that's been burning a lot of our, our staffs over time and weekends up, but we've been in, working in conjunction with Lyon County on that because the truck was found right on the border, just inside their county. So we've had a number of conversations with their sheriff and then some inter-agency searches between us and state parks, as well as we were able to utilize the airboat from another county office here to go out and search some shorelines because our boats weren't capable of getting in close enough to the shore. So we appreciate the county cooperation on that, and other than that, just little meetings here and there with Chris and with other people, and that's about it.
Thank you.
We included our school drive, took supplies down yesterday to the superintendent.
It was very helpful to hear you and Chris talk about your plans for the evidence locker in that area, and what you're going to do with that, that was very helpful. Also, the drone, too, that was kind of interesting. Claims and payroll, submittals? Our last public comment? We are now going to go to jail inspection for our quarterly jail inspection, and, but I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting right now.